Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30 PM, and I would like to call this October 26th meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees to order. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement of non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call?
Yes. Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Quintia?
Here.
Trustee Nienberg?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here. All right, on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all of our visitors tonight and thank you for your interest in the library. Item number four is the approval of minutes from the September 28th regular meeting.
And you all did receive an updated draft of those minutes from what went out in the packet. There was an addition of a paragraph at the beginning stating President Gagani's guidelines that were given for the -- and these are all under the public comments section. Then added in President Gagani's reminder to the audience to hold applause and background comments, and then also the request for audience not to repeat points. And then there was a note after James Wool's comment that details the events, noting his time was up, et cetera, and summarizing what happened at that point. A correction of a name, a fixed typo in the link that was shared by one of our commenters, and then at the end of the public comments section, the roll call for the motion to take a five-minute recess. So those changes are all -- and you all received the paper version of that as well.
Excellent. Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
On my second. We continue a voice vote. Yes, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all abstaining? All right, those have been approved. Item number five, financial matters. The September 2022 financial report and October 2022 invoices.
We are seventy-five percent through the year, and as of the end of September, our revenue was one hundred point six-nine percent collected. That represents ninety-seven point four-eight percent of our property taxes collected. We have received significantly more in personal property replacement tax, as has been explained in previous meetings. And at -- for the expenditures, we are at seventy-one point nine percent spent. And in the months to come, you should be looking for jumps in our special legal as we start to see the invoices for the FOIA requests coming in and our attorney's support on that. Also, the intangible assets, which is our software line. We did need additional software, Google Vault licenses, et cetera, to help us with those FOIA requests as well. And then I just wanted to direct your attention to the TMC furniture invoice that's on the invoices of note. That purchase of new play equipment for the kids' room was actually being underwritten by the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation. And so they are making a donation that will offset that invoice.
All right, I will move to ask the financial matters as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented, and a second. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia?
Yes.
Trustee Nienberg?
Aye.
President Gagani?
Yes. All right, we are on to item number six, public comment on agenda items. These are any comments on items that are listed on the agenda for today. Okay? Item number seven, public comment on other library business.
Just a number.
Yes, if you want to just go through.
Good evening now. My name is Noel Manley, and I'm here to address the library's land acknowledgement. Note that I'm an Anishinaabe man from a reservation called Gogowabonigag, or the White Earth Indian Reservation in northern Minnesota. We are also commonly known as the Ojibwe or Chipewa people. We range from southern Ontario through northern Michigan, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and eastern North Dakota. As I said, I'm here to address the library's land acknowledgement. Now here we have -- now here we are in the year 2022, and the Downers Grove Library has taken it upon itself to advocate on behalf of Native people almost two hundred years after the founding of Downers Grove and the end of the Black Hawk War. Well, you're a little too late. So what is the library's motivation to make this statement? Well, the statement stems out of the cultural Marxism that librarian Julie Milovic and her staff are pushing for the RTW Consulting Discovery Report. You'll recall that Downers Grove taxpayers paid over eighty-six thousand dollars to this consultant who advised the Downers Grove Library must not be a neutral institution in this community, but rather an advocate. But its land management knowledge is just another example of the cultural Marxist oppression oppressor-victim narrative that the library staff and its consultant are pushing on this community. As for the statement itself, it really says nothing. It paints Native suffering in the broadest possible terms, while serving as a liberal Marxist virtue signal that appropriates the suffering of Native people. Your statement says nothing about Native strength, nor its resilience. You don't even have the decency to mention the Potawatomi people who occupied this area prior to white settlement. Shame on you. So here's a suggestion. Instead of focusing on Native suffering, why don't you focus on Native sovereignty and success in the face of adversity? There are hundreds of examples. Jim Thorpe, George Bender, Eli Parker, Ira Hayes, Chief Holmday, Chief Joseph, Sitting Bull, Crazy Horse, Red Cloud, the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, and the Indian Gaming Act of nineteen eighty-eight. To further illustrate the fact that Native people have moved on, I've brought a recent copy of my tribe's monthly newspaper, Anishinaabe Today. It's interesting to note, the paper is completely devoid of any resentment of past injury injustices. In fact, our tribal chairman, Michael Fairbanks, wisely stated the following in this month's remarks. "This grandfather teaching of the Rop or Asim reminds us that it is better for us to forgive and move forward than to fill our pockets with heavy weights of resentment and anger, which can lead to illness and troubles." And this is from the largest Ojibwe band in Minnesota. So I think you need to understand that Native people are now empowered and are moving on. You do not need your empty gestures that are designed to drive division in this community. Midwich, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other comments?
Good evening, my name is Brian Sewell. I think something is badly amiss at the library. It's time for us to take a look. It takes time and effort to ferret it out because FOIA requests are delayed beyond legally acceptable parameters. Also, the subject of many of the FOIAs is in fact the FOIA officer herself, Julie, but there is no conflict of interest she advises. While captured by DEI obsession, the library has been transformed from a user-pay, and I mean taxpayers using it, to an inclusive environment for all. Do we all feel better about ourselves now? Guilt assuaged? Such a burden lifted. But there's a problem at this library. In a rush for inclusion at any cost, no progressive case is not considered. We've created a dangerous environment for our children. Of course, it's the children that are going to suffer, the people with the smallest voices. FOIA requests to the Downers Grove Police Department indicate dozens of responses to complaints at this address every month. I've witnessed the mentally ill screaming at children and following them through their library for imaginary transgressions. But wait, that's not all. The worst is yet to come. I've learned that there was an occasion this month, in fact, on the eleventh of this month, when a man was caught masturbating and then washing his hands in the drinking fountain at Downers Grove North. I'm saying at Downers Grove Public Library, excuse me. And also an occasion when pictures were taken of a patron while they were using the restroom stall underneath one of the walls. Predators are just that. They look for weakness in a system, and they capitalize on it. A hobo was caught bathing in a sink unclothed. Didn't hear much about that. Drug use has been reported in the upstairs bathroom by staff. What about Joe H? I won't use his full name, but I'm pretty sure you know who he is. Who has threatened several staff with violence, including alluding to a firearm and checking out books on machine guns. Tutors, now afraid to use the library, refusing the services to those that probably need it most because they're uncomfortable and they feel unsafe. Three months ago, a second homeless man was caught masturbating downstairs. Were the police called? I'm not sure. Nothing to see here, right, Julie? What would have to occur for the library to issue a statement condemning harassment and predatory behavior within its own library? Never mind about what is happening around the world or in Minneapolis or anywhere else, here. How many PIT reports are being concealed? How many times have people been banned and the police are not called? And what is the policy involving the police? How do we decide someone's masturbating and washing their hand in a urinal, does that qualify? Or do they need to be convicted of it in a court of law before it is something that is worthy of recording in your records, if you keep them at all? The public has no idea of the scale, but a KPI would expose this problem. Instead of burying the problem from the patrons, I would like to plan to notify the public every month of how many bans are issued and the police were called. If they are patrons or not, do they have a library card or not? Is this just a homeless shelter that you've opened? And some type of detail that informed the public the nature of the issue. I have an eight-year-old daughter, nine-year-old daughter. Eight-year-olds are allowed to be left here by library policy unattended while there are people masturbating over there, shooting up over there, and threatening the library staff. We also need a security review, not by these people here, by people that know about security, the police, or some type of consultant. This is a minimum that will allow parents to evaluate if the library is a safe space for their children. This is absolutely terrifying that I'm learning about this. I'm not learning about it through any of your virtue statements that you're putting out. I'm learning about it by having to ferret this out from people that work here and from people that have seen these firsthand. And some of this is firsthand experience by me. We expect a safe place for our kids, not a publicly funded drop-in center for lewd acts near children. And I'm not even talking about the Drag Queen Story Hour. The board has a role, and it's not just a rubber stamp, whatever the director puts in front of it. To say additional oversight is required is a massive understatement. Let's get this under control before we have a more serious incident. We have no idea who's in this library, homeless people, sex offenders. We have no idea who's in here. There's children right there. I also request a review of the library director's performance. She's an at-well employee. She's been very divisive, and she's putting our children in danger. You have no business being around children.
Okay, at this time, we do have pre-scheduled interviews with strategic to review proposals. So we will need to -- Can I take a few more? Okay, go ahead.
All right. Yeah.
All may requires thirty minutes of our files.
Yes, and I need to check and see if our -- We don't necessarily have to do it all in one go. I want to check and see if they're in -- They are not in the waiting room yet, so yes.
You all know me and my foundation context, but for the record, my name is Robin Tryloff, and I've lived in Downers Grove for more than thirty years. My professional background and expertise include the study and evaluation of nonprofit organizations and their roles in democratic society. I've evaluated organizations for the federal government and for private sector entities, analyzing groups' administrative, financial, and programming capabilities. Having served on the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation Board of Directors since 2017, I've had the opportunity to observe this library's operations firsthand. So I'm here tonight to give you my professional analysis of the library, albeit in a much more concentrated and truncated form than I would otherwise. The library's statements of purpose and values are clear, well-defined, achievable, and well-matched to its size and resources. And its administration programs and professional staff are aligned with its stated purpose and goals. In fact, Library Journal recognized our library as a four-star library in 2020, one of only sixteen in Illinois to receive a star rating based on our library's quantity of services as compared to its peers. Further, staff members have been recognized by their profession. Public Relations Manager Cindy Cottrey and Adult and Teen Services Assistant Manager Van McGary were awarded the Library Journal 2022 Movers and Shakers Award. And I'd like to highlight our library director, Julie Milovic, who this past July was elected treasurer of the Illinois Library Association Executive Board in recognition by her peers of her budget and finance skills, knowledge, and experience. While staff expertise is excellent, overall, employees are stretched to manage the breadth of the library's responsibilities and could use additional support. The library's programs and activities are measurable and are measured. Anecdotally, I can confirm this because when the Foundation Lump Committee by Chair proposed the project to staff, they had already studied the idea and found that it would not garner sufficient community interest. The library is transparent in all of its work. Its financial information, bids, requests for information, reports, studies, plans, programming, policies, and services all are easily accessible online. Strategic planning is considered an essential best practice for public libraries to deepen their understanding of and connection to the communities they serve. The process by which our library's strategic plan was created included public focus groups, an online survey, and widespread press and social media promotion, effectively inviting community-wide input for its planning. In fact, the Downers Grove Public Library was featured in a case study in the Library Journal article advising libraries on how to write an anti-hate statement. Library Journal is an American trade publication for librarians. The library's more recent Equity Strategic Plan informs the library's larger strategic plan and will be incorporated into its next strategic plan, for which planning is underway now. Professional practice has found that an anti-hate statement is a useful tool to support historically, intentionally, and traditionally marginalized people and groups, and serves as a learning resource for all community members. The library's six anti-hate statements are on its website. The library engaged a consultant to help make recommendations leading to the library's equity work. The resulting report notes, quote, "Patrons of Downers Grove Public Library that represent dominant culture people groups frequently cite themselves as taxpayers who should inform the direction of the library as just cause for disengaging issues of DEI. The sentiment is that because they pay taxes, they should have resources and experiences that are aligned to their own value system. The challenge in this sentiment is that there are also taxpayers who represent historically, intentionally, and traditionally marginalized people and groups, also known as HIT MPG's, as well as HIT MPG allies who pay taxes and far less frequently see their interests represented in the integral acculturation of the library experience. The challenge that the library faces is how to hold all the competing interests of its taxpaying patrons honoring the library as a public square that welcomes everyone while also upholding the interests of people who have had their interests most primarily neglected historically. By law, public libraries cannot discriminate in the provision of access to books, media, or programming. The Illinois Public Library Core Standards require the library to adhere to the American Library Association's Code of Ethics, Library Bill of Rights, and Intellectual Freedom Statements and Interpretations. In addition, the library has a First Amendment right to speak its own voice as a government agency about important matters. I applaud our library Board of Trustees and our outstanding professional staff for standing strong for professional ideals and intellectual freedom and for working to address the breadth of our community needs. As a resident, taxpayer, devoted library patron, and professional evaluator, I'm here tonight to voice my unqualified support for the library and its extraordinary professional staff. There are many other residents here tonight to support the library, and I'd like to close by asking everyone who is here tonight to support the library, its staff, its DEI initiatives, its strategic plan, and its programming, to raise their hands.
Thank you. All right, do we have remaining comments? So we will --
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay.
Last year, the library held focus groups and surveyed the community. One of the threads that you can see for yourself in the feedback is a desire for more recognition of and services for underrepresented groups. This wasn't new. It was also visible in previous community surveys. The library board heard all this feedback and included it in the Equity Strategic Plan. When Director Milovic and the staff implement the tenets of that plan, they are literally doing their jobs and doing them well. During last month's public comments, a speaker complained that in 2004, he questioned why the library had books on gay and lesbian topics when they weren't checked out. This shows a profound lack of understanding of what it's like to be an LGBTQ plus person, especially how it was eighteen years ago, and the inability to empathize with other people. The reason those books weren't checked out is that LGBTQ plus people aren't always comfortable taking a book up to the circulation desk. Remember that back then, there weren't the self-checkout machines we have today. Were those books read? I guarantee you they were. It just happened in the library where people felt safer. I tell you this from experience. But if someone wants to use the metric of activity to measure need and worth, let's go ahead and use that metric. Based on the Equity Plan, library staff planned the Drag Queen Bingo event for National Coming Out Day. All forty slots immediately filled up, and there was a waiting list. So if the complaint is that in 2004 there were fewer checkouts of gay and lesbian books, so the library shouldn't have had them, then the same argument applied today means the library should hold more programs like Drag Queen Bingo. People who are scared of difference can't, on the one hand, argue that no one checked out this handful of books in 2004, so they shouldn't have been there. And on the other hand, today, say this program was full, but it shouldn't be out. At last month's board meeting, you heard from a few of the teenagers who were directly affected by the cancellation of the Bingo program. Their parents were fine with them attending the program, and yet those parents' rights were taken away by threats of violence. You also heard from people who weren't affected by the cancellation, but who decided they should have the right to make decisions for those teenagers and their parents. The ripple effect of the threats of violence led to the cancellation of a program about race because some of the participants no longer felt safe attending it. And now we know a swastika was carved into a library window. Staff and board members had already seen a need for DEI programs and services in the feedback from the community and acted on it to combat fear and ignorance. Now we see quite clearly why it's needed. This illustrates how they see pieces of the community that a single board trustee or village counselor might not. It's a shame the library couldn't hold two of the programs asked for by the community because of fear and ignorance. It's a shame that the people who could have just talked to their teenagers about their personal beliefs and not attending the program instead forced staff to spend their time responding to comments, tallying feedback, and working on security plans. But in the end, that turned out to provide useful information because what it showed is that the community overwhelmingly supported the Bingo program. Sixty-one percent of the overall feedback supported it, and the staff. And after the program was canceled, that number increased to eighty-two percent. It's important information to gain. Library staff were literally doing their jobs, and what's indisputable is that the community responded with support. So can we use words like controversial and contentious about the Drag Queen Bingo program or nonexistent critical race theory programs and services? The numbers tell us we can use those words when referring to debate in this room and the village chambers, but that's about it. It's been two months now, and outside of these two rooms, the vast majority of the community, ninety-eight percent, doesn't view it as enough of a controversy to even weigh in, let alone stop using the library. Every statistic for library activity in September went up from the same time period last year. Total circulation, number of visitors through the doors, new library cards issued, use of rooms, computer use, program attendance. Every statistic went up. That is not the reaction of a community that thinks its library did something wrong. As you work on the new strategic plan, you can do so knowing the majority of feedback overwhelmingly supports these efforts and recognizes the false narratives that there was no reason to have LGBTQ books eighteen years ago and that there's no racism in Downers Grove today. When you hear someone say something like, "This is a waste of money," or "It's inappropriate," you need to add the words "for me" at the end of their opinion. They have every right to respectfully voice their opinions, but they only get to make decisions for themselves and their family. When I say, "This is a good use of my money" as a taxpaying resident, or "This is appropriate," add "for me" at the end there, too, because my opinion counts just as much as theirs. Last year, a small group of people tried to use an external group's talking points to ban books, wanting to tell the rest of us what we can and can't do. The community made itself heard and said no. Last month, a small group of people used external group's talking points to try to cancel a program, wanting to tell the rest of us what we can and can't do.
You're at five minutes, if you want to just touch that.
The community made itself heard and said no. We support this staff and board. Next, they used external group's talking points to go after the library's work around diversity and inclusion. The community is here yet again to say no. We support this staff and this board. What will this small group of people try to stop the rest of us from doing next? Our library is so well-run and responsive to the community that it's getting harder for these folks to come up with new grievances, but I'm sure they'll keep trying. It doesn't matter. Whatever talking points they use to try to decide things for the rest of us, we'll be there then too, to say, "No. This community supports this staff and this board." Thank you.
Yes. Do we have any other individuals that wanted to comment? Okay. All right, in that case, we are on to item eight, new business, which we do not have. And item number nine, unfinished business, strategic planning consulting proposals. So at this time, we're going to be conducting two interviews with two consulting firms. And first up, we have Amanda Standifer. A book that she is getting, a little noisy signal. Amanda, you are in front of us, and can you... Can you hear us?
I'm going to change the different Wi-Fi, so give me one second.
Okay.
Hey, hi, everybody. I think I'm back. Maybe that's a little better. Okay, still testing the volume, maybe?
Yes. And Jen's going to turn it up just a little bit for us on our end. Hello, Amanda. This is Amanda Standifer from Fast Forward Libraries. She is our first consulting firm. We have Amanda, and then Rethinking Libraries will be coming in next. So Amanda, would you like to start by giving us a little background on you and your firm?
Sure, awesome. Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me join on Zoom this evening, or on GoToMeeting this evening. My name is Amanda Standifer, and I'm a librarian and library consultant based in Champaign, Illinois. I've worked in libraries for the past 20-plus years now at this point. I've been a director, a department head. I've been a children's librarian. I've worked in academic and special libraries as well, worked in a library system. But I've also worked in the philanthropy sector. So for about seven years, I worked for a community foundation and then also a family foundation. I have been doing consulting work for a long time, mostly strategic planning, but I formalized that work in Fast Forward Libraries about four years ago. And our mission is to help libraries build capacity to maximize the impact they have in the communities they serve. And mainly, the way that we do that is through helping libraries with strategic planning, but we also do a lot of other projects. When I say "we," it is myself and one employee, Laura Huddleston. So we are a growing firm, but small, and we use other contractual consultants to kind of round out our team and bring expertise to the projects that we engage in. So that's a little bit about myself.
Okay. Can you share with us a brief overview of your process? What do you feel are the most important parts of the strategic planning process and why?
Sure. So when you look at the proposal, you'll see that it's broken down into three phases: the learn phase, the dream phase, and the do phase. I think the learn phase is the most important. It's also the longest piece of the process. It's where we engage with the community to hear what their hopes are for the future of the community, but also of the library. It's where we engage internally with the board and the staff to learn what's on your mind as you consider the future of the library. We also look at a lot of other data: demographics, community scan, all of that. But all of that data is really just a snapshot in time. It's not intended to be a mandate or recommendation. It's really meant to be a tool for the next phase of the process, which is the dream phase. That's where we take what we've learned and we add our lived experience through retreat sessions. So one for the board and then one for the staff. The main difference, the reason I split those into two groups, is the board has responsibility in setting vision and mission, strategic directions and goals, kind of those higher pieces of a strategic plan, whereas the staff spend most of their time on the goal and activity and evaluation level. So you're all working towards the same thing in your retreats, but the conversation is at different places. And then finally, the do phase is where everything starts to come together. So we draft plan documents and then also help transition from planning to doing because you don't want to go through this process and then just set the plan aside. You want to actually have a way to manage your implementation process and report the success that you have in reaching the goals that you've set in your plan. So that's a very high-level overview. I'm happy to get into more specifics if you have questions.
And board members, feel free to jump in with questions if you have any. I'm just going to go through our list. So what is your process for ensuring that we reach as many different population types as possible for gathering feedback?
Yeah, so this is the age-old question, and I'll try not to get too soapaxy about this. One thing is that we obviously want to hear from as many people as possible, but that's really difficult because if people aren't already engaged with us, like what motivation do they have to engage in a strategic planning process? And so I think we have to be strategic about the people that we invite to be involved in certain aspects of the learn phase, especially... You know, the community survey is a way to get very broad community feedback, but you're mostly going to get people who are already connected to you in some way, who already care about you. I think that's okay. This is a great way to learn about what you're good at, your strengths. This is where you want to kind of build your plan from, that place of strength. And then to hear from people that you're not already engaged with, that's where the focus groups and interviews come in. So using a community needs assessment approach, so you're thinking about who are those stakeholders? Who are organizations that are working with populations that maybe we're not as connected with, but we would like to hear from? So being strategic about who you invite to include in focus groups, who are you asking to interview, usually has a great result of being, you know, very inclusive of the different populations in your community versus a survey that, you know, you're throwing a very broad net, but people may not want to take the time unless they feel connected to you in some way. So that dual approach of using the survey to get really good information about your strengths, which you're good at, and then targeting your focus groups and interviews to learn more about community needs and the different populations that you want to potentially bring into the library in the future. So I say it's a little bit of a soapbox for me because I know we want to hear from non-users. Like, that's what we're always seeking, to expand the people that we're reaching in the community. And I think that's more of a strategy in the plan versus the planning process, if that makes sense. Because it's not a one-time, we hear from you and then we never do anything again. It's a, how do we learn more about your needs so that we can establish ongoing services, programs, collections, spaces that meet your needs and keep you engaged in a longer way versus just a one-time during a planning process?
So what experiences have you had in dealing with difference of opinions and/or conflict in focus groups?
Yeah, so this happens a lot because people have feelings about what public entities are doing, not just libraries, but schools and park districts and all kinds of different types of public organizations. Julie can tell you that I just gave a presentation at the Illinois Library Association Conference on facilitation. It was very like how to develop a community meeting so that you're maximizing input but also respecting opinions, how to deal with conflict when it comes up in a meeting. I find that the focus groups are actually a really wonderful place for people to learn more about the library and maybe kind of deepen their understanding about what the library is trying to do and the goals that the library has had. And I also understand that people have feelings about programs that you may be doing or collections that you have. And, you know, there's a place to kind of give that feedback in a way that's constructive, but then also keep the eye on, like, what's the goal here in terms of informing the strategic plan? So I think part of it is having a structure, having an agenda that gets to the goal of informing the strategic plan versus just letting the session devolve into a complaint session. That doesn't mean that people aren't going to complain, but it means that you have a way to, like, you know, thank you for the feedback. That's great. It's not really keeping with, you know, our agenda at this point or our strategic planning process. We're going to capture that feedback, you know, over here in a parking lot, and like, let's get back on track. So, you know, hopefully, if people are respectful and can have dialogue, but if there's a situation where people aren't feeling heard or it gets heated, that's a time to, you know, take a break and maybe switch to more of an interview format if the group is not able to have a productive conversation.
Can I ask a follow-up question on the focus groups? How are your focus group attendees selected? How do you go about finding participants for the focus groups?
Yeah, so I recommend working with a planning team. So that would be staff and board members. And they are really a process management team. So it's that team that develops a list of people who they would like to invite for focus groups and interviews. And they actually do the invitations. I find that as an outsider working with a library, people are less likely to respond to me when I'm like, "Oh, hi, I'm, you know, working with this library. Would you give input into this process?" versus if a staff member who maybe has, you know, worked with a group on a program or something like that reaches out and says, "We'd like to hear from you. You know, we're going to connect you with the consultant we're working at." So the invitee list is developed internally.
So a follow-up to that, how do you avoid that becoming an echo chamber? How do you avoid that becoming one-sided or one-viewpoint-represented in focus groups if they're handpicked and invited by the staff and board?
Yeah. Well, you know, I know that your library is very steered by your diversity plan that you have. And so my hope in working with the planning team would be that we would use the principles that you outline in that to guide the entire process. So it's a, you know, asking the question, like, who is not in the room that we're not representing? What views do we want to hear from? And if the goal specifically in the focus groups and interviews is to hear from groups we're not connected with, you're already kind of starting with that frame. So, I mean, obviously, there is a danger because you can, you know, have that group think kind of thing. So it's not done like in a single meeting. It's a, okay, let's, you know, kind of do a community scan. Who would we like to connect with? Who do we know? Maybe who's connected? Let's do some research. So it's a process that takes some time. It's not just, you know, who do we know? It could come to these. It's really intentional.
All right, last follow-up question on the focus groups. The... Never mind, I'll pass on that.
Okay.
So how will you help us determine and prioritize our goals if feedback is vast and disparate? How would you build consensus inside and outside of the organization?
Yeah, for sure. So I think of the three steps as kind of, the three phases of the process as kind of a funnel. We start very broadly, you know, what is happening in our environment? You know, doing an environmental scan, doing a SOR analysis of strengths, opportunities, aspirations, results. We add in the community feedback. So we start with this very broad report of, like, here are all the things that were surfaced as needs, as opportunities. And then it's really at the retreat sessions that we start to narrow. And there's a little bit of magic that happens. I can't really ever explain it, but through the discussions at the retreat sessions, those priorities kind of emerge. And then at the planning team in the do phase, you know, once the structure of the plan starts to come together, the planning team takes the role of, you know, is this the right... Are these the right priorities? Is this what we heard throughout the process? Are we representing the views that, you know, throughout that we've gathered? So there's several different then review layers after that. So the planning team does kind of an initial, like, yes, this sounds like we're getting there on our priorities. Then the board does a review. Then, you know, as you go into implementation, you start to think of, like, individual activities and ways that you're measuring your success. So it's really... So consensus, I think, comes just by the different discussions throughout the process.
That leaves a little bit of an open-ended question around how consensus is ultimately reached. I know it comes out about through the process, but who's the arbiter of that process? How does that happen through, as you, your methodology?
Yeah, so at the retreat sessions, the first thing we do is look at the learning report. So we take time to study that. I mean, obviously, you have it ahead of time, so you can review all of the data. So the first thing we do is, like, take the data, but then add the lived experience of staff members and trustees. So it's a very, like, grounded theory research approach. Like, I don't go into these processes with any preconceived notion of what your priorities might be. I mean, obviously, I work with a lot of libraries. I know in general what libraries are concerned with, but every library is different and has different priorities. So by discussing the data and the learning, the next step is for every board member and every staff member to say, "Here are the three things I think we should focus on over the next three to five years," and talk why those are important to them. And at that point then, once we gather all of that, usually on post-it, no, posts or something, it starts to become clear. So, you know, you take the post-its, you kind of arrange them. You'll have a few outliers that you need to kind of work through. Does this fit somewhere else? You know, we're not in those sessions writing the plan. We're just trying to see where is there momentum, where is there consensus? And then let's dig into those. So when you then, like, let's say you have four areas you want to have discussions about, you dig into those further. And then, so this is all at the retreat session. Then I think it's a matter of, like, okay, so we had these discussions about these four areas. We feel good about these. Are we missing anything? And I think people leave the retreats feeling like, okay, I don't quite know how this is going to come together, but I feel good about what was discussed and how the plan likes to come together in the next phase of the process. So it's really, like, through the discussion, the dialogue at those retreat sessions that the consensus is reached.
So have you ever experienced disagreement between what you thought might be best for the library versus what the library planning committee thought was best?
No, because I'm not part of the process. I'm a facilitator for the process. As I said, I use a grounded theory research approach. I don't come in with any preconceived notions. I don't make recommendations. We'll give you findings. We'll say things like, "This could be something you want to talk about more." But that is truly up to you. I can't think of a time that I disagreed with where a library ended up because it's truly an organic process, and I'm really just the guy to that.
So how do you envision folding that equity strategic plan into the overall strategic plan?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I've been thinking about this because not a lot of libraries have taken the step to formalize your DEI work in the way that you have. And so I think it's really impressive. I think it's, you know, through the structure of the meeting agendas, like, checking in with, you know, are we in keeping with what we say is important in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion? And, you know, just ensuring that you're kind of constantly bringing that into the conversation. So I think, you know, I would be very conscious in developing agendas and, you know, ways that we're getting feedback during different sessions of reviewing that and then checking in with you at the library. You know, you all have been living that plan, whereas I've just, like, read it. So I think I would also lean on the planning team to make sure that we're just doing everything in the process that's in keeping with those guiding principles.
As we've seen in the last couple of years, libraries may need to adapt their strategic plans to meet rapidly evolving needs within our communities. Can you share any real-world examples of how this has played out for one of your clients?
Yeah, absolutely. So some of you may be familiar with the new PLA book on strategic planning, which I think is great. A lot of libraries that I worked with were used as examples in that book. And the methodology that they recommend is instead of... is a very evergreen approach to how you structure your plan. So some of you have done strategic planning with libraries before, may be familiar with something like Planning for Results, where you had service responses, and it was very, you know, constructed of, you know, pick these three things, and these are the types of things you would do within those three things. Or you may be familiar with something like SMART goals or key performance indicators. So again, a very kind of rigid structure for how to put a plan together that's very specific. That's not really the style that libraries are using, and the PLA book goes into more detail about this, rather using a very evergreen approach. So your goals over, like, a very long period of time, 10 years maybe or more, are going to change very little. Rather, it's the way that you implement your plans or the activities that you are engaging in, the way that you're allocating resources. That's what changes more rapidly because you have much more control over those discussions and how you're doing things. So the goals are very broad and aspirational, and then it's more in the, like, objective and activity level, where you can be more nimble. And that approach has really worked during, and now during the pandemic and as we get into pandemic recovery because it allows you to anchor on those bigger things that you want to work towards that you may never fully achieve. So things like awareness of library services in the community. Like, there's never going to be a point at which you're like, "Check, we're done with that." Rather, you will continue to aspire to do that, but the tools that you use and the amount that you're allocating for that may change over time. amount that you're allocating for that may change over time. So I would say just using that approach of the evergreen goals with the more nimble activity plan and evaluation framework is what I use for strategic planning and I think is what is needed in this post, post COVID world.
We hope it's post COVID anyway.
Yeah, right.
I could give Julie a break here for just a minute. You work with a lot of libraries and I'm sure that some implement their plans well and some don't.
That's true.
What do you see as the key factors in each of those?
Yeah, so I really thought about this a lot and read a lot of books about this because my experience in working with libraries over 20 years is that there, there are not a lot of libraries that are good with the implementation piece of the strategic plan. Now that's changing, I feel like, and I think it's changing because organizations, public organizations are kind of evolving and becoming more sophisticated. But what I've identified is kind of the nexus, the crux of this is that when you're in a strategic planning process, you have a very formal, here are the steps, these are things we're going to do in order to come up with a product, have the strategic plan. But then when you transition to implementation, there's not, there's not a structure anymore. So that it's that transition, that gap between planning and implementation where it falls apart, right? And sometimes that's where you just put it in a drawer or on a shelf and you never get back to it. And so there's a lot that's written about how to navigate transitions. And, and so I mentioned in the proposal, William Bridge's work on transitions and the cycle that transitions take. And so the way I help libraries navigate those transitions is by helping them formalize the structure for implementation. So what that looks like in very practical terms is a draft activity plan and a draft evaluation framework. So you've got structure to how your implementation is going to go. Now, my engagement kind of ends at that point, but I feel like giving a library those tools and then the library, the very last meeting I have with the library is, okay, so what, what is the process that you're going to put in place to manage transition? What are your next steps? Because having that process in place is really, really critical. And I think that's the difference between libraries that works their plan and libraries that put it on the shelf.
A follow on, are, are you available after the completion of the final draft down the road a little bit to, if we wanted to come back and ask for a little extra help in the implementation phase? I realize that wouldn't be in the original contract, but is that ever done?
I do this a lot because it's really critical and in your proposal, I can't remember what page it's on, like I often do like kind of follow up coaching or follow up meetings, like check ins up to like for a year. It's pretty common to do this kind of thing and it's, it's not a lot of money, but it's worthwhile because it keeps the library accountable and on track to someone outside of the organization.
Thank you.
And in her cost proposal, there is a per session cost for, for that as well?
Yep. But you don't have to decide that upfront. I mean, that's something that, you know, can come later.
Bill, did you want to ask the next one? That was your question that you submitted.
What number we know?
Number 10.
Sure. How will you incorporate measures, metrics, benchmarks and other measurable criteria into the strategic plan? And I guess also in the discovery process to tack on to that. And then how will you position these as effective means to monitor and govern the operational library against the plan?
Sure.
Picking back on Dave's question, the implementation of the plan.
Yep, absolutely. So the learning report incorporates, you know, all the data that, that the library will give us and that we can find. But again, it's kind of a snapshot at the moment in time. So I, we don't use the learning report to say, you know, here's what you should be benchmarking against. Rather, I think it's during that implementation transition, when you're developing the activity plan, that we provide what we call an evaluation framework. And it basically is suggestions for how you might go forward with measuring your progress. You can't really do that and formalize that until your activity plan is finished. And the activity plan can take three to six months after the process ends to actually formalize because it is also a process, as I just mentioned. So we give you the tool to move forward with that. We have a discussion about what that might look like. We talk about reporting. And then, you know, that becomes part of kind of the follow up for the library to work on, like, you know, if then, if, if these are the activities that we say we want to move forward with, that we think are going to help us reach the goals that we've set out, here are the measures, whether that's data we're already gathering or surveys that we need to put in place. So that usually comes directly from the evaluation framework that, that we give as part of the implementation document.
Let me follow up on that because the, the nature of the question was specific to the development of the strategic plan and how objective facts, data, benchmarking influences the development of the strategic plan.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, you probably picked up from my earlier question, I've got some concerns about the subjective nature of this and I'd like that to be balanced by some objectivity in terms of data and benchmarking.
Sure. So in the, the learning report, we include, you know, analysis of library data and trends over five years. We look at census, demographic changes from 2020 to, from 2000 to 2020. But again, we kind of hesitate to say like, because this trend, you should do X. That's what happens during the retreat session is for all of us collectively to make meaning of the data that we've put together. So we gather the data presented in the learning report with findings, but then we collectively discuss it during the retreat session. I don't know if that, that answers your question, but that's how we, okay.
So I'm, I'm curious, so, you know, I, I like this idea that you mentioned about, yeah, first you put your activities and tactics into place and then you think about, you know, what that, what the evaluation, what the metrics are to evaluate the success of those activities. How does that relate to kind of what we were talking about earlier about needing to evolve? So thinking about how a metric might change as the needs of a library change, thinking about all the things that we've been up against in the last couple of years and needing to say, oh, well, you know what, the target's a little bit different now because of X, Y, Z. Is that something that we can talk about as part of this process as well?
Yeah, 100%. I very much use a developmental evaluation approach. So it really is the, we think these are the metrics that are going to show the progress that we want to achieve. And then when you actually get around to putting, you know, gathering that data or looking at that data with the lens of, of the goal, you're like, oh, this isn't showing it. So is it the metric that's wrong? Is it the goal that's wrong? Is it the instrument that we're using to collect the data that's wrong? So, you know, I feel like the, the implementation is very iterative and the, the evaluation needs to kind of develop as you're going along as well. Now, that doesn't mean that it's so developmental that you never do it because there is also a danger of saying like, okay, we're going to gather this data and then you kind of start to, and it's not working how you thought that it would. I do think you need to make some decisions about at what points are you going to maybe do another community survey or do a program specific survey or something like that? Or put in systems so that you're gathering patron feedback like at a regular, on a regular basis at your service desk, which you probably already are, but maybe not in a formal way. So how could you formalize that so that it would tell the story of the success that you're having in reaching your strategic principles? So the, the activity plan and evaluation framework are typically looked at like on an annual basis. So at the end of the process, the activity plan will have like all the gathered possible activities from the retreat sessions. And then as the library thinks about implementation, you kind of break those down into, you know, year one or two, year three, and you have to go back to that every year because depending on conditions or things changing, you may need to update that. And you may need to do it more than often than a year if conditions change.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any other questions? Then we have one final question for you, Amanda. So what makes you the ideal candidate to lead the GPO in our next strategic planning process?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I know the Rethinking Library folks, I think they're great. I don't think you would go wrong, you know, working with either of us. You know, I'm a librarian, I've worked in Illinois libraries for most of my career besides the time that I've spent philanthropy. I feel like my philanthropy background also informs the work that I do in libraries because it's a parallel but very different sector. I'm, I feel like I'm a great facilitator. It's hard to, you know, brag about yourself, but I feel like I do really well in, in meetings and getting dialogue and especially when talking about difficult topics. So I think that's a value add that I bring to the process. Also, like, we're just really passionate about this work. We think that strategic planning is fun. We, I love to leave a retreat session where maybe people have been a little worried or anxious about it and they say like, that was a really great discussion. Like that, to me, is the whole point of doing strategic planning is to get really excited, engaged and cohesive about what you want to do in the future. Couple, couple of reasons.
Thank you so much, Amanda. We appreciate your time and I know you've been traveling, so we, we appreciate.
I'm in Michigan, yes.
We appreciate the fact that you were able to join us this evening. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And our next is Rethinking Libraries. And they are There, we gotta have everybody. And we have Rob Cullen, who is the principal with Rethinking, and Janet Nelson, who is the principal with Rethinking Libraries, and Rand Maxi, who is one of their other consultants. So hello and thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be with you. Appreciate you making time to chat with us.
As you can see, we've got kind of a full house here. I'm going to start by just asking some questions. The board may, board members may also jump in and ask follow ups, et cetera. So can you start by giving us a little background on you and your firm?
Yeah, so, so our Rethinking Libraries is a firm we actually kind of grew out, spun off of a firm that was called Kimblebough Associates that I had started with my now ex-wife back in 2005. She had been doing, she was doing consulting full time until, until about 2018. I was doing it part time with her until, I can't hear you. Can't hear me? Can you hear, Vegas here again?
Yes, we can hear you just fine, Rob.
Okay. All right. So, and then in 2014, I joined her full time. And then like I said, she went, she actually went back to work in libraries. She's the, the operating officer at the Allen County Public Library in Fort Wayne, Indiana. So then at that point, Janet joined me. And so her background largely in libraries was at Demco. My background prior to full time consulting was I co-founded Event Solutions. So that's a software company that we started that ended up focused on libraries. And so our, our, our focus has really been almost exclusively public libraries. And strategic planning is probably our, our, our top service, but we do a lot of facility planning and work both directly with libraries and often in partnership with architects as well. And, and then Randy Maxi, who's also with us, is a new associate, just kind of just started working with us here lately. And his background, he's worked, he's been in libraries almost as long as Jan and I, working with EBSCO, who's a database company, Novelist, at Demco as well, and most recently as a vice president at BiblioTec, which is a library and technology company. So that's kind of our, our, our general backgrounds. We don't have MLSs. We think, you know, some people like that, some people don't. I think we, we come at it from respects with the perspective of, we are super passionate library advocates. We've been living, you know, the last 15 to 20 years, doing nothing other than working with libraries, but we also bring in that outside perspective. You know, you've got a lot of MLSs on staff, so it's, it, from our perspective, it doesn't add anything for us to bring more MLSs to the table. It's more about the process and more about that engagement with the community, which is our, really the center of our business is, is that community engagement piece.
So can you share with us a brief overview of your process and what do you feel are the most important parts of the strategic planning process and why?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, our process breaks into three, kind of three to four phases. One of the things about us is that we don't have a rigid approach or, or format. We are very flexible. We, we say, if you work with us, you'll hear us say us a lot, we've been to you, we don't make you men to us. So our, our process is, is very adaptive to each and every client. We, part of the thing, one of the things we do at the beginning is, is tailor that process and find out what, you know, where do you want to put your primary emphasis? So we make sure we're adapting our, our, our approach to, to do that. For us, you know, the kind of early stages are that planning, data collection, data analysis, logistics planning, getting the survey off the ground, tailoring that to, to meet your community's needs and getting the scheduling and the promotion of the, of the community engagement and survey done. That, kind of in that middle space is, is when we do the, the community and staff and board engagement. That's, for us, that's probably one of, we think, one of the most important aspects is that in conjunction with the survey is really getting that voice of your community, both users and non-users into the process. I think that's the strength of our, of our, our work. You talk to our previous or current clients, that's, that's where we really excel is, is engaging the community and, and creating a, a discussion, discussions that really surface out some of the key issues and, and, and deep issues of the community, but do it in a way that's not preachy, that do it as in a way that doesn't allow, you know, someone to just kind of hijack the conversation either, right? And we really try to cover the broad spectrum of what, the issues that you're, that are facing you and, and use examples, use trends, you know, bring those experiences without bringing it in of, you know, oh, you should, you should do this, right? It's really, we're there to enable what you think, what you and your community thinks is right for your library, not to decide for you. All of that information then from the survey, the community engagement, all the data analysis and benchmarking, question utilization, analysis that we do, demographics, we compile all that into a findings book. Ends up being somewhere between 100 to 180 pages, depending on, you know, how much community input we get, how many people take the survey, kind of tends to drive that, that size range. That's provided to the library and, and is used then at a strategic retreat, which is our key kind of milestone event in the process. And that's a typically a one day, although we have done it also where we split it up over two days, a combination of board in a most typical format, and not everybody, I don't do this, not every client does it exactly this way, but kind of our most typical format is a combination of board members, staff members and community members. 15 to 25 is kind of the sweet spot for that group. And we go through over about seven hours, again, one day or split over two. We go through, you know, exploring the, the findings and through a variety of exercises, ideation exercises, voting exercises to determine kind of your key, your key areas of focus. We have a variety of exercises to kind of, you know, in your case, you've got kind of mission vision values. We have some exercises that are kind of like gut checking those and, and doing some ground up analysis and seeing where that ground up analysis still aligns with, with where your mission vision values are, just to kind of, you know, to check those. And sometimes they need to evolve and sometimes they're fine as they are. So we go into that with an open mind. And again, we don't have, we don't vote, we don't decide. We're there to facilitate and help you find the best plan and find the best mission vision values for your, for your community. And then, so out of that retreat with the key focus areas, vision, vision value, we draft the high level plan. So this is the three to five year, it's the direction, it's the vision. We're big believers in what we refer to as a two tier planning approach. So you get that high level vision that has specificity. I mean, it is specific on, you know, where you're going to focus and some of the ideas that might, you know, initiatives that play into that. But it doesn't, it's not trying to say, this is exactly what we're going to do and we're going to do this in year one and this in year two and year three. We believe that that, particularly COVID blew that kind of forward looking specificity out of the water. We weren't a big believer in it before COVID. We think COVID's made that even, even more so, more true today. So we, that top level is a three to five year horizon. And then we work with you, after that's approved and kind of finalized, we work with the staff to develop the first 12 month plan. And it's that 12 month plan where you get into the And it's that 12-month plan where you get into the real specifics, the real, you know, nuts and bolts, who's doing it, what is specifically you're doing, what are the steps, budgetary impact, timeline, what are the measurables, what success look like? But you only do that on a 12-month timeline, and then you repeat that process each year for the next 12 months. So that's our scope and our typical approach in a nutshell.
Excellent, thank you. So what's your process for ensuring we reach as many different population types as possible for gathering feedback?
Yeah, Janet, I've been doing a lot of talking, you wanna speak to that?
Yes, yes. So there's a couple of things there. We work very closely with the staff on this because you're the ones that are local and really in touch with your community and your staff, or your community and, you know, kind of what's going on in your community, some of those populations that may or may not be using the library. So we have the staff reaching out to some of those communities, doing personal invitations. We find that those are key to getting people there. You can do all the marketing in the world, and if you don't have that ask, where you're actually going out and specifically asking people if they'll come into your sessions, or even in some cases, if they'll take your survey, it's hard to get them to do that. So we're asking really everyone to get engaged in doing that. So your board, your staff, even other partner, community groups, have been very effective in helping to reach some of those folks. Some of your community partners are actually the best way to get to some of your non-users, because those non-users, they're not necessarily the people in your database, so it's sometimes difficult to reach them. So those community partners are often key. We just have been working in my home community recently, and we were having some issues reaching some age demographics and some of the ethnic demographics. And we managed to work with them to change those results as we were seeing those come in.
So what experiences have you had in dealing with differences of opinion or conflict in focus groups and/or the retreats?
Yeah, in particular in the focus groups, it's definitely been something we've, you know, had to deal with from time to time in various clients we've worked with. A couple of things that stand out to me, this is right before COVID hit, we were working in a community in Michigan, in the greater kind of Ann Arbor area, and we happened to come on-site a week after they'd made national news for some racial incidents that had happened at the high school. And it had been, they'd kind of gotten on, you know, national news. There'd been kind of a lot of attention paid to it. There'd been a variety of school board meetings where there'd been, you know, tempered for flaring, and, you know, there was some definite division in the community. And so we had to kind of come into that with, you know, that in the atmosphere, and certainly some of that bled into the sessions. And I think our approach is, you know, we're there to hear everyone out. We're there to try and get a broad set, you know, we're not trying, we're not in those sessions to get, to dive deep into any one subject. We make sure we hear people out, but then we're very clear. It's okay, we've captured your thoughts on this, and there's a lot of other things we've gotta cover. It's going in the notes, it's gonna, all the things, one of the things we do in our community sessions is that there's two of us there. So there's one person leading and one person taking notes. We're very clear to everyone, we don't capture who said what, but the things that were said. And we're very clear that, you know, if they feel very passionate about something and that we're hearing it, it's gonna be captured in the notes. All the notes that we collect from the sessions, before anybody besides us sees them, we put them all together. And all of those notes, every comment that we record from those sessions, shows up in the findings book that we deliver. So we don't summarize those, that's one piece that we used to summarize, and we felt like, no, we're doing a disservice because we're not, you know, people are kind of coming to share their thoughts. For us to filter that out is a disservice to the, you know, the time they're taking to come and share their thoughts. So those, you know, we're very clear that those comments are gonna show up in the notes. But we need to move on because we've got other, you know, other topics that we need to gather input on. So most people are respectful of that, they just wanna make sure they're heard.
The library will be closing in 15 minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks or the first floor service desk at this time.
If I could jump in, I wanna make sure I ask consistent questions.
So we...
In 15 minutes, thank you. Sorry, the overhead announcement happens, we can't stop.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. So just last week, we were in a library in Falls Church, and they definitely got some people that had some strong opinions about materials that were in the library, right? Which has been a lot of libraries are dealing with. I'm sure this is, you know, you guys have been dealing with some controversial issues in your community, so we were facing that headlong just last week. And so, you know, we're prepared for that, we're dealing with that. And I think we're experienced at making people feel heard, but not letting it derail the process.
Quick follow-up question, and I appreciate your answer. It took care of my second question. But the first one is, with respect to how you select participants in the interview process and the focus groups, how do you go about avoiding that becoming an echo chamber? If we're asking staff and board and partner, existing partners, for who the participant should be, especially when we're, you know, we're very aware right now of some divergent opinions on the role and purpose of the library in the community, how do you make sure that that doesn't turn into a one-sided point of view?
I mean, it's always a risk, right? And I mean, I think our perspective is there's no perfect process that's gonna, you know, guarantee that out of the process. Our kind of approach on this is two-pronged, right? So as Janet mentioned, invitations are really critical. So we work with our clients, we say, okay, let's work with staff, let's work with board, let's work with your community partners to try to identify users and non-users, people that you know that aren't using the library from the community, regardless of their perspective, and try to get, you know, create an invitation list with you. I mean, we don't live in your community, so we need your assistance in developing that. So, you know, so ultimately, we can't control, you know, how people steer that process and the names that they submit for invitations. But hopefully with, you know, some of the guidance and some of the prompts we're giving, people are giving that due diligence and not just bringing a certain perspective to people to the table. But then we also work with you to advertise it broadly in the community, trying to get it out on, not just, you know, on the email list that you have of your users, but social media, you know, social media ads, local news, going through different, you know, partner agencies. Recently, in Sterling Heights, Michigan, they were able to put an insert into the water bill that went out to the community. So everybody that got a water bill in the community saw the link to the survey, saw the schedule of the different community sessions. So everybody, you know, that didn't, it doesn't hit 100%, but it was like 92% of the people that lived in households in the community got that mailer in their bill. So, you know, and I think we saw good results. We saw a really broad, you know, kind of perspective, and a lot of non-user people, non-users took the survey. You know, we saw a really good representative perspective of the community. So I think when we can work with our clients and they, you know, really kind of take that as, you know, a serious initiative, and I know you guys have a really great kind of, you know, EDI strategic plan as well, that speaks to kind of some of these things of making sure you're doing diversity in your processes and stuff. I think when you follow those, you'll end up with a good representation. You know, I don't feel like we get echo chambers a lot. It happens once in a while, more often than not, it happens because the partner that our library we're working with is only doing one or the other, they're only either only doing the invitations, or they're only doing the marketing, and they're not doing both. When we were with clients that do both, I feel like we get a good balance of the community, and we're hearing both sides, particularly when there's some, you know, some strident division in the community, we're hearing both sides.
Yeah, the one other thing we've had clients do too is sometimes they'll send out a postcard, because again, then you can hit every address, whereas even with email, even with your own file with email, you can't hit every address because you're not necessarily allowed to email everybody in your file. So postcards have been effective with other clients as well.
Mount prospect did that on the plan we did with them this year, earlier this year.
Thanks.
Yep.
So how will you help us determine and prioritize our goals if our feedback is vast and disparate? And how will you build consensus inside and outside the organization?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So the retreat is the key to, for us, in how all this information gets synthesized and what goes to the top, right? So like I talked about, we're strong believers in a mix of board, staff, and community members. You know, I think we work with our clients on, you know, who's participated in that strategic retreat and getting, you know, some voices from both sides of issues that might be strident in the community as well there. You know, voices that are going to come at the conversation in a respectful way, but that have different perspectives. And our approach on Retreat Day, the way we break that day down, the way we, where we're talking and, you know, discussing things in large groups, where we do a lot of breakdowns into small groups, we do, we work hard to make sure we're balancing out staff and board and community members in those small groups. That process, we find, is very, you know, dialogue-driven, and we don't run into, never have in our experience, even when we've had, you know, people of different perspectives, not run into conflict in that particular phase of it. And then when the decisions are due, we use a lot of dot-voting exercises. Everybody has the same number of dots, everybody's vote counts the same. So the things that the group as a whole agrees on and what ends up with the most dots are the things that rise to the top, those drive the focus areas. So does everybody walk out of the room agreeing 100% with everything that went to the top? No, but nobody can sit there and say, well, this was all just one person that drove these decisions, or, you know, we went into this process and was already baked what they were gonna, they were gonna say our focus on. It's truly, everybody sees, it's very right out of the open of how things rise to the top, and we use that to drive the focus areas of the plan and to develop that high-level plan.
So have you ever experienced disagreement between what you thought might be best for the library versus what the library planning committee thought was best?
I'll put that number at 75% of the time. And again, this is part of our process, right? We have no vote, we don't get dots. Our role, we take this seriously. Our role is facilitation, our role is to raise the questions, to raise the concepts and ideas, to make sure that what we heard in the community sessions, what we see in the survey, what we see in the data, to make sure those things are being discussed. But at the end of the day, the decisions and the votes in the retreat process are what drive it. And when I say 75%, I don't mean that like 75% of their plans are wrong, but just, there's always something in about three, four of our clients were like, eh, that probably should have had more emphasis, or they're maybe putting too much weight on that from our perspective. But, you know, our goal is not to decide, our goal is to just, you know, elevate the conversation and help you find the right plan and process. Because at the end of the day, we're gonna help you develop a plan, and then we're, you know, we're certainly always a call away, but we're not there living it, we're not there executing it. So if you don't believe in it, if it's not, you know, if it's not your plan, if it somehow becomes our plan, then it's not gonna work.
Follow-up question to that.
Yeah, and there's, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Rob, as I'm, appreciate your answer, and as I'm processing what you're, how you're describing your methodology, it sounds like it's kind of an affinity diagram approach with the dots. How do you balance finding common ground with majority wins in development of the strategic plan?
Yeah, I mean, that is a part where we play, right? Because when we don't walk out of the retreat with, okay, we've made all these decisions, and it's really, we have, you know, we go away, we tabulate all this, we have these different groups of ideas that, you know, got X number of dots, and we rank those. And then this is where some of our expertise and experience comes in, is, you know, we're not just looking at what ended at the top, we're like, okay, well, this ended up at the top, but this thing that was in fourth place, there's really four connected ideas to that, and the total of those is actually higher than any of the others, right? So it's how those things piece together and, you know, and form the focus areas. Like the one, like the one idea that gets the most vote isn't a focus area in itself usually, it's one piece of, and these multiple things come together.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks or the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in five minutes, thank you.
So, you know, so it's how those things fit together. And that's certainly a part where we do play a role. We're not making, we're not deciding what's in there, but we do, you know, we're playing an editorial role of how those things fit together. And when we provide you that draft plan, we show you like, here's all the results, and here's how we saw those things fit together. Often, I'd say maybe 20% of the time, there's some back and forth of, no, we maybe think this is stronger, or this fits together. You know, so there's a back and forth and a collaboration in that kind of editing, plan revision. But it's, again, at the end of the day, it's still driven by what are those things that rose to the top for the most in the group? But even something that gets, you know, a third or a fourth as many votes as something at the top, still impacts how the plan puts together. And all of those ideas, anything that ends up on the wall in terms of things, ends up in how we do our plan, we still list those as possible initiatives. So we have top, you know, top potential initiatives, other, or other strong consider initiatives, and then other possible initiatives. So we kind of, even in the thing where we show that, we tier that out and still include that in the plan to a certain degree. So even those things that might not be majority rule, still kind of have a presence in the plan, but they're just, you know, denoted as they didn't, you know, gather as much support.
Good, thank you.
The other thing to keep in mind is all of this is really, it tends to most of the time be backed up by the data that was collected throughout the process. There are very few times that there would ever be anything that even rises to the top that wasn't, you didn't find things about it somewhere in the information that was gathered along the way.
Nice, okay.
Yeah, I would say where we disagree, it's more so, it often is where we don't think, there's something that was in the data or in the comments that just didn't, you know, just didn't rise up enough in the opinion of the group that was present there. We would have just given it more weight. That's where that disagreement usually comes.
So how do you envision folding our equity strategic plan, or equity strategic plan into the overall strategic plan?
That's a great question, because I was reading through that again earlier tonight, and that question occurred to me, is like, how do these fit together? Particularly because, you know, the formats are not identical typically. I mean, excuse me, one of the things we do is we don't have a fixed, we don't have a fixed plan format. The last thing we do on Retreat Day is we talk about how you want your plan structured. We show you some of the plan structures that we've done. We'll go out and look and pull up some other plan structures that other libraries and other consultants have done for other libraries, to really gather like your perspective on how you'd like your plan structured. And we see a lot of commonalities. If you look at, you know, if you look at 10 of our plans, many of them have certain similar elements, you know, layout elements and things, not necessarily consistency, not necessarily the same plan information, but like how we lay things out, there's, you know, probably six or seven different kind of design or informational organizations that we use. But again, we're not fixed on any of those, and if somebody had a different one, we would, we would, if a client said, oh, we wanna see it this way, that's how we would deliver it. So I don't know if I have a good answer, and I don't know if Janet or Randy does, but...
You know, those are the types of things that we try to dig into and try to understand better as we're going through the process. We have typically asked diversity, equity, and inclusion questions in our surveys. It may be that there are different questions, or it may be that it's already covered by some of the things that you've already worked on. But there may be some things that help to inform that, you know, as we dig in a little bit more deeply. And then we would just kind of figure out, you know, what would make the most sense and how would weave those pieces together. You know, we find that people who are doing the best job with diversity, equity, and inclusion, it really is part of everything that they do. And so it takes apart in pretty much every element. It doesn't necessarily stand on its own, but you weave it into the process along the way. And we can just help to be sure that those things are raised, and we're looking at it through that lens as we're working through the process.
I wanna follow up on that, and I'll put a finer point on it. I liked your answer, but one of my... I liked your answer, but one of my concerns with the way the RFP was positioned is that if the the equity strategic plan was positioned as a given and something that you would fold into the strategic plan. Do you think you're going to be able to consider it objectively, evaluate it as part of the broader scope of what you're evaluating, and incorporate it in the strategic plan in a, as I said, in an objective way? Versus, you know, versus having it bias your work?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's a, that's a very nuanced question. I mean, let me come back to one of the things I said earlier, right? We we don't have a fixed approach. I think, I think we we need a lot more conversations with with the board, with the leadership there, to try and figure out the right approach to that and what, how to use the current, that current plan in this process. I mean, obviously, work went into it. Perhaps there's some, you know, different viewpoints within the community, within the board of 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 that. And I think we need to understand that, and I think that that clearly needs to be one of the the early kind of steps in this process is how, what is the right way to use that tool? As you're starting this process now and in, you know, months after having developed this this other plan, you know, where where is that perspective and and how do we, how do we serve the board? How do we serve the library the best way in utilizing that piece? And I don't think, I don't know, I would say that really decision isn't up to us. I really think that's part of where we need to get some guidance from from you, the client. And, you know, we can certainly bring perspective, we can bring, you know, our experience to the table, but I think how that gets used in the lens is is really a a community decision, a board decision, that it probably isn't really a decision that should just be left up to us.
Thanks.
Well, and I think we have some, we have some experience in dealing with things like that, because sometimes we have clients that, you know, maybe they don't want to change their mission vision values, or, you know, maybe they want to just build on to an existing strategic plan. We still take an objective look from the ground up of all those pieces, and then we go back and compare and just make sure that everything is aligning properly. Because this was done so recently, I I would imagine that there will be very good alignment. But, you know, that's just another double check that that we can do and, you know, get a feel for how that's going.
Thank you.
So as we've seen in the last couple of years, libraries may need to adapt their strategic plans to meet rapidly evolving needs in our communities. Can you share any real-world examples of how this has played out for one of your clients?
Well, I love that you asked this question, because this is like literally defines why we take this approach, right? And I think was was brought, you know, home with 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 the whole COVID pandemic and and how, you know, particularly plans that were developed at a detail level that were like, you know, oh, in year three, we're gonna go do this. It's like, all those plans had to get be thrown out, right? With our approach, because it's high-level and low-level, if, you know, our clients that that had that, they didn't have to throw out the high-level, because their focus areas didn't change because of COVID. The details of what they were gonna do had to change because of COVID, because they were closed or they had, you know, limitations, they were, you know, doing curbside service or or, you know, more virtual programming. So that low-level, that 12-month program had to be thrown out and restarted. But the high-level, the the guidance of what was still important, what was, you know, where focus areas of of attention were, were, was was still relevant, right? That didn't necessarily change. So I'm trying to think of some, I don't, I'm I'm...
Well, one of the ones I was thinking of was Hanley, which wasn't a strategic plan, it was a facility plan. But they had some ideas of what they wanted to do in their building, and we were working with them just before COVID hit. And the way we developed that that plan was also similar in that the approach allowed them to kind of shift their focus and pick up some of the things that they could fit into the into the plan, as opposed to maybe some of the bigger things that they had originally anticipated tackling. So I I think that that's that's one example.
I did come up with one. Pike County, Indiana, actually just starting their process again. So we did their their strategic plan five years ago. We're just getting started on on doing their next five-year plan. In their plan, that was done obviously pre-COVID, they had a, one of their focus areas was kind of on technology and resources at the high level, right? And they had a lot of things, you know, some things around maker and stuff like that. And one of the things, when COVID hit, that they kind of said, well, in this focus area now, we've got a lot of people that need to, you know, that need to see the doctor through telehealth appointments, and we're in a rural area, and we have people that don't have cameras on their, you know, either don't have computers or internet, or they don't have cameras on their computers and things. So they took one of their study rooms and turned it into a telehealth, and that was the implementation of the technology and resources in a way that none of us thought about when we were developing the high-level plan, but made total sense in in light of where things were with COVID. So again, I think that's where that that high-level steering still points you in the right direction, and it's just like, okay, circumstances have completely changed, what are the what are the implementation and ideas and things we're gonna do that still that still move the needle on these focus areas?
Well, I asked this question last time, and I'll ask it again at this point, I guess. You work with many libraries, and in the implementation phase of the strategic plan, you're kind of done and gone, but if the library goes astray in their view, can they call back on you and maybe help you, ask you to sub-straigh a little bit? Is that...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's not in the original contract, that will be an extra thing, but...
Well, quite honestly, we we consider ourselves almost semi-permanent counselors to to our clients. So one of the things, one of the things in our kind of covenant with our clients is, you know, not necessarily, we can't come in for two weeks worth of work, but when you're developing in that second year, when you're developing that 12-month plan in year two, if you want to bring us in and talk with us and have us sit in at a couple of meetings, you know, that's included, right? Not every client takes us up on that, but that offer is there to pull us in and, you know, for, you know, a couple of hours each year, but we're not gonna charge you extra for that. If you want us to pull, you know, pull us in because you're like, oh, we we're having some big issues and you, you know, you need lots of hours of work, then yeah, we're absolutely still available. But if it's just that, you know, hey, we want, you know, a quick consultation, or we're a quick thing, or even a couple of hours a year to, you know, to kind of restart that 12-month, you know, detail plan each year, that that's that's included in the overall price from us.
Are there certain things that you've seen that, some key factors that make the implementation work or not work for an individual library?
The implementation of the plan or the implementation of the strategic planning process itself?
No, the plan.
Of the plan.
During the implementation phase, the implementation of the finished plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest challenge, this is, yeah, the biggest challenge, I think, and this is where we can provide some expertise to a certain degree, is how much do you, you know, how much do you try to take on each year? I think that's one of the reasons why sometimes it's like, oh, we can write a three-year plan and we can write it in detail, is it's like you've got this long tail of time to say, oh, well, we'll do that this year, and then we'll do this next year, and then we'll do this piece in year three. And I think by only allowing yourself to look in 12-month increments, it forces a discipline, right? It forces a strategic discipline on you to say, we can only think about what we're gonna do right now. We might have other things in mind down the road, but we we just have to focus on what we're gonna do right now. And I think if that, if I see clients get tripped up, it's that they get a little too caught up in trying to think too far down the road at that detail level. And, you know, and then they're they're trying to tackle too much because they're trying to get to a certain place, or or they're not tackling enough and they, you know, we have, I think we've had even had a couple of clients that like, kind of didn't write, they wrote, I would say, easy work plans, and, you know, six months in, they're done. Well, you know, our advice is if that happens, and we tell this, if that happens, then you write a new six-month plan right then to get, you know, to make sure you're still moving the the ball forward. You don't just stop and say, okay, we get to wait until January or whatever to to think about this again. It's like, when the checklist is done, you start working on the next checklist.
Okay, thank you.
But I think too, part of it is that the plan is developed in a way that it's simple enough and easy enough to understand, that it makes it easy for for that to be used at regular board meetings and things like that. So the board can help hold the library accountable, the staff accountable, for making sure that things are getting looked at and and considered and that that people understand that, you know, we're working towards these things. And, you know, over time, we will get to all of them or get to the ones that we agree on for each year. But it's in a format that makes it easy to follow, it didn't just get stuck in a drawer and ignored.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, my next, the next question was about measures and metrics and benchmarks, and I'm satisfied with your description in the, when you were giving the overview of your process. So I'll skip, how do you use that data in the development of the plan? And I'll just skip to the second part of the question. How do you position data and metrics and benchmarking in the in the plan itself as part of the implementation and the ongoing evaluation and of the of the strategic plan?
Yeah, so so the high-level plan includes, you know, outcome measures that you would be looking to, you would expect in that focus area to be impacting. Generally speaking, and again, this is, this is typical, we're not specifically calling out in the high-level plan, you know, we want a 10% increase in this, or we, you know, it's, you know, we want to see an increase in usage. It would speak more to that direction that you want the data to go. And then the expectation is, when you're taught, when you're, when you're detailing out the initiatives in the work plan, that is that something that's going to, you're hoping to increase visits with, say, that that initiative, that the elements of that initiative. Then at the work plan level, you would say, we're gonna measure visits, you know, it's our door count, and we, success looks like a 10% increase in door count, for instance. So it's, so those, so the kind of specifics around data and benchmarks and the specifics around what success looks like would be captured in that work plan level. But if you feel like, you know, as a board, you're saying that, hey, we want more specificity in the high-level plan around some of those things, then those will be things that we would add to the plan.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and the benchmarks and all the information gathered previously would be help, that would create a baseline, that you'd be able to do some of that off of.
Yeah, all right, yep, great, thanks.
So I'm curious how that relates to kind of your overall approach of flexibility and adaptability. Are are those metrics something that could or should evolve as we understand things differently and and use them differently to make decisions as the plan gets implemented?
Did you lose sound, Rob?
I did. We didn't, we didn't catch the second half of your, of your...
Dang it. Oh, okay, um, so...
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I have to drag, drag my memory for the last 30 seconds. So, um, how would you combine, how how might you combine what you just mentioned about, you know, kind of specific metrics with your approach of flexibility and adaptability? So, you know, as you, as we start tracking things and as we start, you know, evaluating our progress on some of these activities, is there or should there be room for adapting those metrics as our, as our decisions change or as as we could change our decisions about those entities?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, like Janet said, you know, we 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 pride ourselves on having a very digestible plan, right? That's very easy to kind of look at, to, you know, to easily see at a visual glance, like what what are the things you're focused on and what's important. And we do that in particular so that the board can use this as a tool, you know, at board meetings to talk about these things and to say, okay, well, and this should at least be a very, and absolutely an annual conversation, if not a more regular conversation board meeting, so, okay, this metric is doing this, you know, this this XYZ has changed, maybe that's not so important now, and we want to, we want to rethink how we're how we're doing that. So that absolutely is a flexibility. But our flexibility goes into even how we approach the process. We had a client recently where we showed up the morning of the retreat, two hours before we were supposed to start, and they're like, well, we just found out in the last two days that we're basically gonna be looking at a 20% funding cut. And so we literally reworked our entire approach to the retreat within that next two hours and and took a whole different approach to what we did in the retreat. We still used similar tools, like, you know, the ideation and the affinity grouping and the dot voting, we still use those tools, but we use the the approach that we use into those was completely different than we walked into that day. So we're trying to even show that pivot even in how we approach the process and talking about being flexible and being nimble in that and showing, you know, that not just in what what we're asking or suggesting you do, but even in how we do that ourselves.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll end with what makes you the ideal candidate to lead the GPL in our next strategic planning process?
Great question. So I I think the, when I was reading your, your RFP, you know, it was clear that you had, you were putting a strong importance on community engagement. And I think that is the strength of our firm, engaging the community in those conversations and then in the retreat process as well. And, you know, and making sure that the that the end product, this plan, is not one person's voice, it's not just two or three people's voices, but, you know, that ultimately that it is a a voice of the community in and captured in that plan. I think that's the strength of our organization. We're passionate about libraries, but I think even more than our passion for libraries is passionate about communities getting the library they want. And so I think, I don't know, I think that's, that's who we are, it's, we live it in our DNA. So I I I think that's, that's what we, it's what gets us up in the morning and keeps us moving and keep us, keeps us getting on the plane and going to the next client, getting in the car, driving to Chicago from Madison or Indianapolis, you know, early in the morning, this, this, it is what, you know, we're, we really live and breathe.
Well, thank you so much, Rob and Janet and Randy, for being with us tonight. We really appreciate it, and we will be in touch.
Awesome. Thank you, appreciate your time. Late evening, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second?
A vote, yes, all those in favor.
Lots of nodding.
Lots of nodding.
I know. I think we want, I mean, like coffee.
I, I think, yeah, like a hot.
I know. We need a hot cocoa drink. Yes, that too. I know.
If we want to.
Well, I mean, I understand that.
Pick one. It's pick ones. Yes.
That's what I wanted.
Yes, it's, it's really, um, I thought we might have a, a, a.
Well, it's, I, I, that's why I did, I was like. My notes are really messy.
I thought I changed, now I'm like, okay. Now I understand what I was trying to say.
I don't have a face, it's a good type, so we said I wrote like this. Because this is not, if it was in the Ice Cube tree.
Oh my God, I feel so bad. Were you, are you okay?
I am.
All of a sudden, I have allergies just when my.
And we have like a clear tinge or a tingle.
It's getting bad.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and reconvene, thank you. Oh, 9:25. All right, I just, oh, so I guess we're going to open the floor to discussion and reverse to the last two interviews.
I really liked the Rethinking Libraries. I liked their approach on approaching the community. I thought the idea of a postcard or a water bill or some way to, some way for us to make sure we're really capturing the whole community was, I really, I really appreciated that approach. There was something else that they said that, I can't remember what it was, but their flexibility. I think that, that word I appreciated because I think that we need to be flexible. Things are changing so often.
And we do, because we do that mail newsletter, our discoveries newsletter to the entire community, we have an opportunity there. And our, that was one of the things that the PR department built into our budget for this year was to do that kind of a mailer. So that was on our radar, no matter who does it.
I just really liked that they had, you know, the high level and then the 12-month plan and seemed to really be willing to dive in and create that initial 12-month plan, which would almost serve like as a training tool for future years. And their willingness to come back and work with those each year and develop medical outcomes.
The things I was wrestling with, and these are real high-level things because I'm neither a strategic planner or a, or a librarian, but I've been through the process a couple of times and there are two different things that can happen, I'm told, and I've observed some. One is, there's a, there is a structure that the planner, that the consultant has. And then there's, and you follow through that process. And the other approach seemed to be the second plan here, which has a lot of flexibility. One just hopes that it's not so flexible that you don't get the professional guidance you're looking for. And so I was a little bit torn there, but I, I usually err on the side of flexibility because I, I have trust in my fellow board members and, and our community to give us guidance that we're looking for. And I felt that the other side of it, either of them, I think, would give us the process guidance.
Well, that was actually one thing that I was thinking about as I read these. It was in initial reading, Rethinking's proposal, I was a little bit concerned. Like, is it so flexible that we won't, that we won't have that structure that I think we need to, at some point, we need to follow? But hearing them talk today and hearing kind of how that plays out specifically, I think really helped me know, oh, there is a, a plan, it's just not written in stone from the beginning. So that really helped me kind of work through that as I was thinking about that. So it was definitely something that I read this, it was like, oh, flexibility, well, okay. I think this gives a little bit, what they were saying gives a little bit more structure to it.
I also felt that, you may be surprised when I say this, but that they were perhaps a little more open to a broader range of community input, which I think especially in the current climate, we would want.
I, I will say, and they kind of addressed it, Rethinking Libraries had addressed this as they were speaking. I did, I was concerned that there weren't any librarians kind of part of their, their consultants. I appreciated that. Fast forward, you know, she, she was a librarian, she came from that background. I think, I think that can help. But the way he addressed it, also, again, kind of, maybe think, okay, well, he's right, there are lots of MLSS on staff and in this room and maybe that's, maybe that's okay. We have that outside perspective. So that was one thing that, you know, kind of steered me a little bit toward fast forward just because of that experience and that kind of embeddedness. But I think there's also benefits of having someone who's not coming from that perspective and relying on staff and administration to do that.
I think about like our board, that we each are coming with our different expertise. And when it comes to maybe how Robert's rules work, we know that Julie knows those rules. So then, but we're each coming in with a different perspective and that's good because then we can maybe see in a different perspective, which I think is important. And I think he calls himself like a library evolutionist or something, something fancy.
The idea of a six or seven-hour-long strategy session. A little bit scary, but, but maybe it's the right thing.
And they did say they can break that up into two, two separate sessions, but it, it's still, it's a lot.
From my point of view, I think we have two very able proposals.
Yeah, for me, there was, they were, I was a little further apart on the two of the, to me, there was really no contest. I was, I was pleased with Rethinking Libraries, the balance in their approach between objective and subjective it was. And I thought they were, they were more comprehensive in their explanation of the process.
Well, if that's, I approve to, to, though, I'm that, I kept talking. Approve the proposal from Rethinking Libraries?
I just want to make, I'll second the motion.
I just want to make a point of order here. Like I, as you all have probably picked up by now, I'm a stickler for process and protocol. This was not listed on the agenda as an approval and a final selection. It was listed as a review of the proposals and a virtual interview with a recommendation to approve. And, and I think that there's a technicality there around the item being listed on the agenda, right?
This is.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
When we list, when we're looking at multiple proposals, this is the way we have listed on our, the requested action is approval and it's listed as proposals, so you're approving a proposal.
I, for one, don't think that's clear. And I think there's a OMA regulation around not taking a vote unless it's clearly stated on the agenda. We can consider it, which we did today. Further, and this is more important, this was not whole business. We had not reviewed proposals in the past, they've just been reviewed for the first time. They were just included, included in the board packet and made available to the public for the first time. The public heard the interviews for the first time. And I think from a, if we're serious about process, protocol, transparency and input from the public, we should consider this to be new business, which I believe it was today. And we should table the final selection to the next meeting where we can give the public the chance to make comment on this because they did not have that chance tonight because they had not seen the interview or seen the packet ahead of time. So I would make a motion to, you know.
The proposals were included in the board packet, which was posted on Friday. So it was in, it was available to the public for this meeting and prior to.
And sent to us on the 21st, I believe.
Understood. The interviews were not till night, till tonight, right? And the other thing that concerns me is we've already postponed it one full month. We've postponed it for two years, right?
I, we postponed this for one month. And as long as I've been on the board, this is the process we've used. Now, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm comfortable moving forward.
I understand that we all might be comfortable moving forward. I think we all have some consensus, but we're accountable to the public. And they have, they did not see the interviews until tonight. And we all gained some additional perspective from seeing the interviews.
On the Robert's Rules reporter, the, the agenda was posted and the, and the Open Meetings Act, the agenda was posted, which contained the proposals. So I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm with you, Dave, and I think that, I mean, I'm ready to approve the proposal from Rethinking Libraries. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Rethinking Libraries.
Well, you made a motion.
I know I did, but I don't know if it was heard, so I'm just making it again.
And there are two options. There's the fixed cost and the variable cost option. I would suggest that we do the variable cost option just because I think we're going to use that flexibility within the planning process. And I think the variable cost option gives us.
Since it has a cap, I would agree.
Yes, because it does have a cap on it.
I will motion to approve the proposal from Rethinking Libraries with the variable.
Cost.
Cost option.
Can I accept a change of motion if you might so?
Would like to amend that motion and move that we table the, still the next meeting in the interest of allowing the public to consume the interviews and make comments, which we should, if we're serious about our commitment to transparency, we should allow.
All right, so we have a new motion to table this discussion for till next meeting. Do we have a second for that?
Okay, can I ask a question? I, I am not the Robert's Rules person, so clearly, so, um, may I ask any implications of the post? So, yes, I, we have been talking for a good month. What are the implications of, of taking the vote next month?
And clarification, our meeting next month will be moved to the second meeting.
Yeah, it's like this.
So is the other, is, are the proposals still valid?
That's what I was going to.
They've already extended the timeline for us. And if you look at the timelines for getting started on this, they show kickoffs in November. So approving the process at the November 16th meeting would shift us another month.
Does it have budget implications in the way that we pay their fees or the way the schedules work?
No, it really doesn't because that deposit will go in, in, in either the November or December. So it, either way, the deposit's going to go down in this fiscal year.
So we have, what, amended motion on the table?
Yes, to table it till the next.
I'll, I'll second. I, I agree that considering community participation is important. There were lots of people here tonight and I hope that they do consider what was, what we were saying and, and provide comment. We should take that seriously.
All right, we have a motion and a second to.
I just seen that the proposal from Rethinking Libraries is good for 90 days and it's dated September 2nd. October, November, December, it would expire December 2nd.
So we would vote per, third of November.
And it does to 16th, right?
Yes. All right, any other comments before?
And I just, again, I, I think we, as a board, should be committed to the integrity of the process. And that's my, that's my drive.
Do you have a recommendation or a comment on the, the implications of waiting another three weeks?
No, simply that it will, the process, as Bill already stated, that it's been a while since we had a strategic plan.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Roll call on this one? Sure, sure, let's do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She agrees.
It's past my bedtime. Trustee Dougherty. Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Niemberg.
Yes.
President Gagani.
Yes.
All right, so that motion has passed to table the voting for the consulting firms until the November 2022 meeting. Item number 10, library directors' report.
You all have my written report in the board packet, a number of foias. Since August 28th is up to 28th and they are taking a huge amount of staff time and legal fees. The reminder that our November board meeting is on November 16th, which is the week before Thanksgiving week. We usually do change that meeting to a little earlier in the month, so don't forget. And just a highlight that we are having, we did receive the Talk Story Grant from the American Indian Library Association. And we will be having the programs associated with that on November 6th. There is a, a program for adults and kids, or adults and teens. And then there is a craft and storytelling program for children. So please check those out and join us. We are also, we received an additional $250 from them for that grant that was not in our original project budget, so there will be an additional program coming. our original project budget, so there will be an additional program coming in the upcoming month. So we're really looking forward to announcing that. And then, finally, I have a piece of news that is saddening for all of us. Our adult and teen services manager, Lizzie Matkowski, has accepted a position at another organization and will be leaving us in early November. So we will be on the hunt for another manager, another member of our management team. And that's all I have.
Julie, you mentioned the legal fees and the FOIA. Are, is there a, is there a plan to publish the FOIA, what, what the FOIA request for, who the requestor is and the status to the board?
Sure, I can do that.
And then, do you have a rough estimate of the impact of the legal fees?
Uh, we have only received one invoice for August so far that, that has included any of the, the legal fees, so it was just the very first ones was on there. So, yeah, we, we have not received that from our attorney, Kleinthorpe Jenkins.
So two more months to come. Do we have a, a, a rough estimate of number of hours or, or?
No.
Ballpark? This could get, as somebody who pays legal fees in his business by the hour, this could get out of hand pretty quick.
Well, unfortunately, the number of hours it takes for the attorney to redact FOIA information is the number of hours that it takes. And we receive that when they bill us.
In other words, we don't have a lot of choice.
Nope.
Any other questions for the agenda?
Knowing that we're gonna go to executive session and the trustee request for information will be later and late, the.
George, please pick out.
Yeah, sure. The information that was shared in public comment about the incidents in the library, what is the protocol for informing the board of, of incidents within the library? I don't want to necessarily get into a point-by-point discussion of whether those were accurate. I don't know whether they were accurate. And I find that a little, it feels to me like, like the board should know if those kinds of incidents are happening.
As you had requested in a previous board meeting, we did provide you all with the login and password for the patron incident tracking software, and so any member of the board can go in at any point and look at those incidents.
Okay, I did not recall that. Was that?
I think you're, I think you asked, because I actually went back, because I was like, oh, that's curious. And so I, I went back, I had actually only logged on one other time. And I know there's kind of a new, with the new safety model, I was interested in kind of how far back those went and what it was looking like. And it was, it was interesting to see. And we, we see some, we see like the really egregious ones, the ones, obviously, we're doing with the library vans and things. We, we haven't, we haven't had, you know, kind of blow-by-blow, so to speak, kind of reporting on that ever, except for when it gets to the point where we have to, we have to make a decision about that thing. But there's some really detailed information in those reports, and so I, you know, even, even me looking at it, I go, oh, my gosh, is this too much information for me, considering in terms of privacy? So I, I just, I, answering like that gentleman's questions, like, on a point-by-point basis might be really.
Yeah.
Hard because of that confidentiality, because there's a lot of, you know, information that libraries have need on the ground to like get, and police that need, you know, to actually be working through those incidents. But there's, there's a lot of detail in there that, which definitely would need to be fought for, what gets shared, because it's, I think it's really, really specific.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually quite easy to use.
And the one comment that I will make is that the, the commenter here was kind of, seemed to be putting a couple of different incidents together, so that were separate.
Well, every public organization has events like that, and privacy rules suggest that you don't want to discuss them in detail. And there's a balance between making the public afraid and giving the public information that they need. And that goes for boards and everything else, but whether it's a police board or a village council or a school board, it's, it's, it's a balance, and it's, it's kind of a difficult balance. But I think we do have access to the information.
All right, at this time, we'll be entering executive session, which is closed. Thank you all for coming. We will obviously be opening back after executive session, but in the event. Yes.
Swatman, just, we, I think we have to vote to go to executive session. Do we want to, do we want to move the trustee comments up in the agenda so that people can basically hear the end of the meeting and they won't miss anything, if there are any?
Would you like to make a?
I'll move to adjust the agenda, to move trustee comments and request for information
to right.
To right now, to number twelve on the agenda.
Do you have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just kidding, come back. All right, so officially onto trustee comments and request for information.
I would like to move that we move to executive session.
Oh, Dave just found.
Oh, sorry, Dave. Go ahead, sorry, Dave. I'm sorry, as long as you move it up, I was looking for a piece of paper. I just want to point out and thank the staff for receiving the grant from the American Indian Library Association to cover the cost of a couple of very interesting-looking programs to be held during the month of November. They're on the front page of the new Discoveries program, so I don't want to belabor it, but thank you for that.
Julie, can we do a card for Amanda as well? She, when this, when this last day?
Lizzy?
Lizzy? This is last day, sorry, Lizzy last day.
It is the Friday, or no, I'm sorry, Thursday that.
So it'll be after our meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
We can, we can grab one of our library note cards while you guys are in executive session.
Actually, I have them in the cabinet right here.
Okay.
I don't want to violate my own, my own desire. Back to the, the patron incidents, is it, is the board informed anytime there's a, an enforcement, a penalty, or not?
No, I think it's just a, I mean, I think it's a matter of just checking it periodically.
When it's appealed, I think, it's not when it comes.
Only when it appeals.
It's, it's in that, the PICSS database, but.
Yeah. And when, when there are charges filed, you are, we do notify the board. We have not had an incident rise to that level in some time.
Okay.
Did we have a motion to go on to executive session?
Bill was starting.
Okay, go for it. I'd like to make a motion that the board move to executive session for discussion of the appointment, employee compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those votes? Yes, at this time, we will be.
So if you leave, you're just gonna miss the motion.
I am, what, reconvening, the regular meeting at ten fifty-four.
President Gagani, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We actually don't need the adjourn, a motion to adjourn, if we have a regular business meeting with the agenda that we completed. So you can adjourn at ten fifty-five.